Good afternoon. The Sacramento City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please call the role to establish a quorum?
Councilmember Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Gukkar.
Here.
Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Shenier.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Mayor Steinberg.
I'm here. Thank you very much. We apologize to the public for being 20 minutes late. We were in closed session on some important matters, but we recognize that your time is valuable. So let us get started with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Led today by Councilmember Eric Gedda.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us begin with a special presentation. I want to turn this over to Vice Mayor Hanson, who's going to make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have, in one of our departments, it happens to be the Building Division in the Community Development Department, an Employee of the Year who has done a tremendous job, and I know we have a lot of the leadership from the department here, but I'd like to introduce everybody to Jay Griffin. Jay, why don't you come down? Ryan and Winfred, if you want to come down. Jay is the Supervising Inspector in the Plan Review Group. He's always friendly, creative, and solution-oriented. He actually was the lead on the Life Safety Plan Review for the Golden One Center and always is finding difficult, finding solutions to difficult code challenges. For example, he reviewed and supported an Alternative Materials Methods request to approve the Golden One Center and several other projects. He was a carpenter, a foreman, a job superintendent, and has been a general contractor, including custom residential and small commercial projects. We could use you out in the market right now, probably, as much as we can use you on the inside, but you've been with us for 14 years. And I don't know if your son, Ryan, is named after Ryan DeVor by chance.
That's a fact, Terry.
But, but there are other ways to get promotions, I guess. Anyway, we just wanted to recognize you for being the Employee of the Year. I have a certificate for you and a little special something for me, but I'd like to invite Ryan or Winfred to say a few words on behalf of the department.
Mr. Hanson, I just want to say that this program was created a little over a year ago in an effort to recognize our employees for their great work that they do. We award an Employee of Each Month, and then at the end of the year, an Employee of the Year from that group of folks. Jay was chosen by myself. The program was created by a committee in community development, and this was one of the things they asked for. They asked if we could recognize the Employee of the Year at council, so this is very important to them. I thank you for doing that. Jay is very creative, solution-oriented, and most of all, positive. He's always smiling. He always is happy, and he's just looking to make things better in the department as well as for our customers, find a good way to solve complicated problems. So Jay, if you want, otherwise, we can just...
Oh, does the city attorney have a report out from closed session? Jay, do you want to introduce us to...
No.
Okay, great. So is this your son, Ryan?
Thank you. So I have 18 people to speak on matters not on the agenda.
This is my son, Ryan, yes.
And who's this lovely lady next to him?
I'm the supervising engineer, so I'm his direct boss.
The first is Wanda, then David Andre, and then Les Light.
Okay, great. Well, just on behalf of the mayor and council, we're aware there's a tremendous amount of activity in the Building Department right now. It's record-breaking in the valuation of it and just the complexity and the number
Wanda?
Yes.
Your time is going to start.
of projects.
I want to just show you, today I ran into, ran into an encampment where the Caltrans
So we really do rely on all of you to help deliver for the community and continue moving us forward. So I'm going to bring this down to you, and we can take a photo, if you don't mind.
Yeah, that sounds great, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yep.
was there with a garbage truck, and I understand that these officers did not offer any kind of assistance. They told them to get their stuff and get out. And only because I was there, they didn't confiscate anything. In fact, they actually all left.
Thank you, Wanda.
I don't know if you guys are continuing to take things from these people. They already got their lives taken from them because they're on the street. Everywhere I go, I see police. I'm going to stop, and I'm going to start bringing this up to your attention, because it's not right. You guys don't have enough shelter. They're telling me that the 200-bed shelter over on Railroad is full. I don't know that. They won't let me in. So I think we need to start getting some more availability for the shelters because of 200 people, and we got, we got 3,000 to 4,000 people on the street, 13,000 to be exact. If you guys want, you don't give them a place to go. What are they to do? Be confiscated? How would it be if it was your mother, your brother, your sister, your family member? Would you want their stuff?
Wanda, thank you for your comments. Greg Galliano, who leads the Impact Team, is in the back. Will you tell him the address of that video so we can try to get those people some help?
I already made him aware of it.
Okay, great. Thanks, Wanda. Next speaker?
Our next speaker is David Andre, then Les Light, and then Suzanne Hastings. Our next speaker is Les Light, then Suzanne Hastings, and then Patty Taylor.
Mr. Light.
I'd like to request that Mr. Copeland and Ms. Hastings may go before me.
The clerk has called them in the order they were turned in, which is our procedure, so please approach the podium.
Well, we can be flexible.
I'll try to be flexible. Publicly, the people of Sacramento were assured and guaranteed that our local soccer team would be entirely privately funded. Strange, then, now that the mayor and city council are obviously indicating their intentions to use Sacramento City taxpayer funds and city assets to promote the enfranchising of the soccer team by funding $250 million for a soccer stadium and to pay out $150 million in an expansion fee. What the construction cost and overruns in additional expenses will amount to, we can't even guess. Two of the other major private investors, Meg Whitman from formerly HP, and Jed York, the CIO of the 49ers, have both withdrawn from backing the team. The lead backer of the team and its franchise bid has suspended plans on the stadium, apparently anticipating the commitment of funds and resources from the city before going forward. The $400 million would only afford the soccer team a possibility to be selected from a number of other prospective teams. If the city of Sacramento now undertakes to fund this sports venture, the remaining private so-called investors might profit from ticket sales, broadcast rights, and various promotional marketings, but even at that, it is a very dubious prospect. In any case, there is no reason to think the city would see any return on any such outlay. So why is this happening?
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Hastings, then Patty Taylor, and then C. Miller.
Good evening, City Council. If the mayor and city council are planning to expend funds for a bare chance at inclusion in the major league soccer, we must ask why. Statistically, studies and investigative reporting overwhelmingly demonstrate that these municipal stadium and sports teams' investments have no significant positive effect on local economies. At least $400 million would be required to pay for a soccer stadium to enter the Sacramento team on a list of teams, only one of which will be selected for the major league membership. Seventeen and a half million dollars were allotted last year to manage the miserable and precarious circumstances of our homeless. The estimated numbers of homeless here are widely varied and are hotly disputed. The most reliable estimate, the estimate that the city council refuses to acknowledge, puts the number at 14,000 individuals.
14,000?
Half the money spent to help the homeless was, in fact, allotted to repressive and racially biased policing. How much of the rest was spent on an ineffectual tangle of bureaucrats, NGOs, coalitions, partnerships, and under-resourced programs, photo ops, gestures, and offering a few, if any, tangible results? Meanwhile, the numbers of homeless are obviously increasing. What in the name of reason and sanity are your priorities? If you want to stimulate our local economy, you would do far better to make available resources to those in our city who are most desperately in need. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Speaker is Patty Taylor, then C. Miller, and then Fong. Ms. Taylor?
City Council members, Grandma is back. I live in North Sacramento area, and so does my family. Two parts of the homeless tragedy have been on my mind for months: shelters and housing. First, I am witnessing how the huge, expensive temporary winter shelter on Railroad Avenue has helped those slowly allowed to enter while also causing a negative effect on the North Sacramento residential and business area. I wonder where the people sheltered there will go when it closes. What if, right now, you start developing multiple smaller shelters throughout the city? Consider the suggestion made by Councilmember Jennings at the meeting when the temporary winter shelter was first approved. He suggested that each district hire a realtor to work with the community to find locations for shelters that would be supported by that community. Secondly, the city is not providing enough low-income housing for folks in need. What if you make the housing development, you are starting at the Evergreen site in North Sacramento, a model of success? Not by putting a huge 200-bed permanent shelter there, 300 yards from our neighborhood and right down the street from an elementary school, but by using all three parcels for housing. Two have already been sold for housing. A decision on the third will be considered within a week. Another company will also build low-income housing there. They've made a bid to buy that property, a high bid. What if you make that happen? Don't thwart the efforts of those working for years to make Del Paso area a viable business and living community. Make Evergreen a model of excellent, safe, attractive housing conveniently located by a light rail station in a neighborhood trying...
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Taylor.
...in earnest to thrive.
Thank you for your comments. Thanks.
Our next speaker is C. Miller, then Fong, and then Fago.
Homelessness is a huge problem. Our society has created it. The cost of everything has went up far more than wages have. The cost of education is out of sight for just the average family, and it can happen to anyone. I've helped a couple of homeless people. They had degrees. One was an unemployed nuclear physicist, and she was homeless. They won't hire her at a minute, for minimum wage because she's overqualified. We could fix this as a country. We can do this. It's going to, it's going to be hard, but we can do this. I have a suggestion for a small Band-Aid fix at the railroad shelter that we've been talking about. There's a lot of complaints about the pollution in the garbage. How about a dumpster there? How about some porta-potties? Give these people the dignity of being able to go to the bathroom in a porta-potty, and they won't be polluting the river. I suggested this on our neighborhood blog, and I don't know if it was from my suggestion, but there is a neighbor out there with garbage bags, and he is enlisting the homeless people, and they are helping to clean it up. So this would be a small resource, but I think it would help a lot. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Fong, then Fago, and then Robert Copeland.
Just wanted to share with you a poem that I wrote about what's been happening with the homeless situation. Last week, we talked a little bit about how power was abused by the city to harm people. But today, I want to talk about how the city holds people hostage. Hostage. I am nothing. I just, I just have my words. I am nothing. I just have my heart. I am on this yellow brick road to the city paved in gold, asking for help from people who hold the power in this golden city of Sacramento. Are you not the wizards, or is it all a sham? Are you the Tin Man, wanting approval for your heartless plan? I know you have a heart, yet you hold hostage unhoused women and men, holding hostage people's dignity, holding people's lives in your hands, holding hostage their means of survival. It seems to you their existence is trivial. You who claim power over people's lives, you who create barriers against how they survive, kept from view more than 30 feet. Barriers to keep out those you consider undesirables, barriers from your conscience, barriers to hide from their death, barriers to feel safe, barriers to hide the truth, holding on to your lies. You have the power to change, yet there you sit on your throne of shame. You set up blockade, sending people to their graves. I am nothing but a citizen, hoping for a reasonable change. Shame on you, complicit in this murder of people without a name.
Wrap it up, Fong. Thank you.
You, thank you. You shine the ladder to deny food and shelter, creating barriers between friends. You say your prayers like good men as you send people to their end. Are you able to sleep at night, knowing that it was your laws, your ordinances, that drove the knife in their hearts?
If you could please wrap up, I'd appreciate it.
Say your prayers, close your eyes. All the while, you did nothing while they die.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Fago, then Robert Copeland, then Chris Rogers.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Hopefully, this year will be better than the year that shall not be mentioned. I'm going to start off with a story real quick that just happened yesterday. Yesterday, after marching for the reclaim MLK event, I went to go get me some food, and I got a phone call from a debt collector over a fine from a camping ticket that I acquired in 2015. They're telling me I owe $650 over a camping ticket. How I got up to that amount, I have no freaking idea, but it's really ironic. You keep saying how you want to help people get off the streets, yet for sleeping outside, for lack of someplace else to sleep, I'm now in debt $650. How am I going to ever be able to pay that? I have no job. I have no way to make that kind of money. Yeah, and if I go to ask for money now, it's illegal. That's another misdemeanor, so I have to risk getting a ticket for that, which will be in more debt, just to be able to pay off the ticket that I got for not having a place to sleep. You know, it just seems really backwards. It seems more like a way of just to keep people in the same situation and seeing no real help out there, you know? We finally have this one shelter, and there's so many people that need it that can't get it, you know? There's been proposals for tent cities, tiny home villages, all these things, but all I see you guys doing every week is the smallest amount that you can for the homeless and the most that you can for your business district buddies.
I got it, too.
Just like this new stadium you guys want to put, hundreds of millions of dollars for our sports arena, while people are still dying in your streets. Maybe it's time we get our perspectives in place to start taking care of our people instead of taking care of big-money interests. Thank you.
Next speaker. Our next speaker is Robert Copeland, then Chris Rogers, and then Trina Allen.
Why are you, our elected municipal representative, so ready to squander upwards from $400 million on a bid for a sports franchise that has so little to offer, the material well-being of our city? And the world of real economics resource provides to those in the most dire need are resources that are most directly displaced into the greater local economy? So why were so many Sacramento's being evicted and living on the street? We can only assume this will serve to politically ingratiate those select few who will directly benefit from this and will return the favor with funds for election campaigns and self-promotional projects. This misappropriation of funds, hundreds of millions of dollars for a stadium, and dubious fees may advance your personal careers, but the people of Sacramento shall be shamefully ill-served by this return to the Kevin Johnson-style maneuvers for a grandiose sports arena scam. In defending those, these machineries, machineries for our soccer team, Your Honor, our mayor, you said, "We want more things, not less." We agree, sir. We want more things. We want more affordable housing. We want more shelter for our homeless. We want drinking water and toilets and sanitary amenities for the homeless. We want the right to rest. We want to, we want desegregation of our housing. Yes, we want more things, not less.
We have 10 more speakers to go on matters not on the agenda. Chris Rogers, Trina Allen, and then Melissa McTirren.
Good evening, City Council members. Mr. Mayor, I've heard you say that you like to solve problems, and it's important that everyone manages a piece and plays their part. It's the collective work of many people who can truly make the difference. Our traffic enforcement offers are part of that collective work. They work hard but are spread too thin, and you could say right now that no matter what they do, they're set up to fail. So here's some data for you. The Office of Traffic Safety report shows driving accident rankings for similar cities in California. Having, can you see it? Okay, great. Having a low number is not a good thing on this report. For total fatalities and injuries, Sacramento ranks three. Stockton, Oakland, and San Francisco are all ranked below us. As you can see, below and speed-related fatal and injury collisions, we rank two out of Here's a pie chart from UC Berkeley's collision data, which has been funded by the Office of Traffic Safety. Speeding has been responsible for almost half of all traffic accidents in Sacramento from 2011 to 2016. So here's something to consider. A more robust traffic enforcement team doesn't just lower the amount of accidents from speeding. In 2017, the California Department of Justice reported that increased traffic enforcement reduces other crimes: auto burglaries by 50%, auto thefts by 57%, robberies by 33%, residential by 52%, and overall crime reduced by 44%.
You have 20 seconds.
Per the Sac County Sheriff Department data for the year 2017, theft made up almost half of all crime in Sacramento. If you look at both pie charts, you'll see we have both theft and speeding issues in Sacramento. This is just a small piece of the puzzle, but an important one. Just by adding one more traffic enforcement officer on our street could solve several issues at one time: reduce speeding and deter criminal activity.
Thank you.
Okay, we are Sacramento, the capital of California. Instead of lagging behind on this data, we can change it and lead the way. Thank you very much.
Thank you for, can you leave, can you leave, can you leave some of the materials, please, for us to copies of and review? I'd like to look at that, please.
Next speaker is Trina Allen, Melissa McTirren, and then Ron Elmsley.
Hi. My name is Trina Allen, and I'm a Sacramento resident. I'm here today to stand with Black Lives Matter Sacramento and to demand a complete oversight of our police department, including its trainings. Association of Police Officers should not be in charge of the facilitation of trainings ordered as a result of police violence in our community. Any actions the city makes uses our tax dollars towards accountability and transparency should be strictly monitored by the community it serves. That was the point. As a voting, voting member of the Sacramento community, here are my demands. Sacramento Police Commission should be empowered to approve the process and confirm, confirm the completion of each training. Trainings need to be conducted onsite, with the exception of field trips, and facilitated by experts in the field of training's curriculum. Training should conclude with a test of understanding. Trainings need to be overseen and monitored by community members that have actual experiences relevant to the training. Dejean's life mattered. Joseph's life mattered. Your commitment should be towards justice for them rather than allowing your police department to quell community outrage through false promises. Future anti-black state violence will rest solely in your hands. An aside note, when you marched with Martin Luther King Jr., you marched against police brutality. You marched against your anti-camping ordinance, and you marched for the potent, the people most marginalized in our community. Your rhetoric is meaningless because your actions have already betrayed you.
Melissa McTirren, and then Ron Elmsley, and Eric Frame.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Melissa McTirren, and I'm a resident of Sacramento for the past six years or so, and I also work at Sac State. And I'm here today to stand with Black Lives Matter Sacramento as well, to demand complete oversight of our police department, including its trainings. An association of police officers should not be in charge of the facilitation of trainings ordered as a result of police violence on our community. And any actions that the city makes that use our tax dollars toward accountability and transparency should be strictly monitored by the community that it serves. And as a voting member of the Sacramento community, here are my demands. The Sacramento Police Commission should be empowered to approve the process and confirm the completion of each training. Training needs to be conducted onsite, with the exception of field trips, and facilitated by experts in the field of the training curriculum. Training should conclude with a test of understanding, and trainings need to be overseen and monitored by community members that have experiences relevant to the training itself. Thank you.
Ron Elmsley, and then Eric Frame.
Thank you for, can you leave, can you leave, can you leave some of the materials, please, for us to copies of and review? I'd like to look at that, please.
Next speaker is Trina Allen, Melissa McTirren, and then Ron Elmsley.
Hi. My name is Trina Allen, and I'm a Sacramento resident. I'm here today to stand with Black Lives Matter Sacramento and to demand a complete oversight of our police department, including its trainings. Association of Police Officers should not be in charge of the facilitation of trainings ordered as a result of police violence in our community. Any actions the city makes uses our tax dollars towards accountability and transparency should be strictly monitored by the community it serves. That was the point. As a voting member of the Sacramento community, here are my demands. Sacramento Police Commission should be empowered to approve the process and confirm the completion of each training. Trainings need to be conducted onsite with the exception of field trips and facilitated by experts in the field of trainings curriculum. Training should conclude with a test of understanding. Trainings need to be overseen and monitored by community members that have actual experiences relevant to the training. Dejean's life mattered. Joseph's life mattered. Your commitment should be towards justice for them rather than allowing your police department to quell community outrage through false promises. Future anti-black state violence will rest solely in your hands. And a side note, when you marched with Martin Luther King Jr., you marched against police brutality. You marched against your anti-camping ordinance, and you marched for the people most marginalized in our community. Your rhetoric is meaningless because your actions have already betrayed you.
Melissa McTirren, and then Ron Elmsley, and Eric Frame.
Hi. My name's Melissa McTirren, and I'm a resident of Sacramento for the past six years or so, and I also work at Sac State. And I'm here today to stand with Black Lives Matter Sacramento as well, to demand complete oversight of our police department, including its trainings. An association of police officers should not be in charge of the facilitation of trainings ordered as a result of police violence on our community. And any actions that the city makes that use our tax dollars toward accountability and transparency should be strictly monitored by the community that it serves. And as a voting member of the Sacramento community, here are my demands. The Sacramento Police Commission should be empowered to approve the process and confirm the completion of each training. Training needs to be conducted onsite with the exception of field trips and facilitated by experts in the field of the training curriculum. Training should conclude with a test of understanding, and trainings need to be overseen and monitored by community members that have experiences relevant to the training itself. Thank you.
Ron Elmsley, and then Eric Frame.
I'm here to ask for proper funding of the police department. About nine months ago, there were four people wounded at the intersection of Y...
Excuse me, you don't shout out from the audience. Please.
Y Street and 32nd. A month or two later, a person was killed at 32nd at Sixth Avenue. A couple of months later, another person was killed at 32nd Street at Ninth Avenue. This is the second murder at that location in 10 years. Of course, it was on the other side of Ninth. Okay? We had a murder last month. They're never solved. We had a murder this month. They're never solved. They don't have the personnel to solve them. Most of these people are African-Americans, and, you know, I think their lives should be just like anyone else's. But you're underfunding the police department. Sam Summers tried his best to make it work with not enough money. I mean, he had bent over backwards, and he failed because you folks thought the fire department was more important than the police.
One more time, I'm gonna ask you to leave.
Sam Summers, he kept on trying to sell us next door, as that was a panacea.
Got 10 seconds left.
That didn't work. So I'm hoping that, I'm asking for you to properly fund the police department. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Eric Frame, and then Mac Worthy.
Hi again. So I'm gonna start with some quotes from you, Mr. Mayor, from last week. You said, "This will be the year of housing. Stay tuned." You also said, "Affordable housing is desperately needed." So I look forward to the year of housing, the year of affordable housing. I guess the question is, will you follow through? And the other question is, what holds you back and what has been holding you back in the first place? We have people, two people die a week in Sacramento on your streets. What I'd do if I was in your position is I'd call a housing and shelter emergency right now. You could utilize some of the vacant buildings all over town. There's many. There's an empty railroad yard. There's also an empty Arco Arena collecting dust, which is fully equipped with showers and bathrooms. This is a way to save your citizens' lives, if you are all interested. If you want to open up to us about what holds you back, we're all ears. We can only theorize from our angle. I was in San Diego last weekend. There's a major homeless problem in San Diego as well, but there's two things they do different in San Diego. They hire people to clean up the trash in the streets, and they provide public bathrooms instead of taking them away. So let's steal, let's steal those two ideas from San Diego, Mr. Mayor, and let's hire some people to clean up all the trash on the streets, which is getting ridiculous. And let's build some port, or bring in some porta-potties so that people can urinate and not in the bushes. Just makes a lot of sense. By the way, we've been called a hub of child trafficking by the FBI, so the list of issues and problems go on and on.
Thank you, Eric.
Next speaker is Mac Worthy, and then Mary Tappel. Mac Worthy, Mary Tappel, and then Mackenzie Wilson.
Through the mail, you still ain't called me. Mr. Worthy? But we, going before here, we ain't seen nothing new about homeless. We ain't seen nothing new, Dale. The same story. These people been coming here for four years. We ain't seen about three yards, that's garbage. You got enough vacant commercial property to put those people in and come with a plan to keep them in here. But we got, we got to go to other things. Now, we look at, Mr. Carr grew up in Virginia. You remember, Annie had a baby, can't work no more? State of Virginia borrowed that off the radio. The law been here words. The words that's going on in Washington, D.C., the news media out here raising hell. You know, it don't make sense. Tell these people something that's interesting. Do you realize you're not gonna get the money from Calpers that you was promised on your retirement? This is the thing to talk to people about. These same people sitting here are gonna be just as homeless as these people here because you got to find an extra job. Prices ain't gonna go down, prices gonna go up. So quit worrying about what somebody say behind closed doors. If it ain't racism, it's sexism, it's naive, it's what somebody behind closed doors. You never worked in the private sector. Go to the private sector board of directors and sit down and listen and keep your mouth closed. People, let me tell you, y'all can't stand that. You're too thin-skinned. You sitting here crying about stuff that babies cry about. We have passed that, people. Same thing I tell about racism. We don't give a damn about racism no more. Economics. That's what we trying to show people. Black folks, go to economics. Get on Donald Trump's train now. Democrats been lying to you for the past 60 years, and you ain't got nothing. The darker kids, black people should be everywhere. You realize what we work for $2.50 a day? And you gonna put that money out on babies, not even a citizen here?
Oh, come on.
It's ridiculous.
Come on, don't do that.
A welfare state. It's not only Mexicans, it's the Japanese and Chinese folks here because that big check come here from China to your public education.
Oh, come on. We don't, we don't do racism here, man. It's not what we do.
Our next speaker is Mary Tappel, then Mackenzie Wilson, and Michael Voy.
Excuse me. Trina, come on. I don't want to have to kick you out, but I will. You don't, you know that you don't shout out from the audience. I give you your time. Don't, don't do it again. Do it again, I'm gonna ask you to leave.
Please, please, Mayor Steinberg, I would really appreciate it if, if the council and yourself and the members of the audience would support my right to speak in public. And anyway, here I am, Mayor Steinberg, I'm so glad I live in a very different city, apparently, than the rest of the, most of the rest of the people who've been testifying. I, unlike them, I guess, have been looking with open eyes at the area outside 2040 Railroad Avenue as compared, that is the new triage shelter. And I've seen more and more people being responsive and the police keeping it very clear of the most dangerous things, like loose pit bulls. And I've seen what you spoke of, Councilman Harris, people, people doing the ad hoc feedings at that site, outside. And I also saw, just yesterday, this is also just yesterday, I saw the outhouses there. I'd already written to Captain Seifert, following up on my testimony last week, that yes, the police come by there all the time, but usually because it's not out of control anymore since they've been patrolling it more. And of course, following up, they don't need to stay very long. They just cruise slowly, make sure they're seeing things correctly, like I do with Mario, my parkway cleanup and safety partner. So anyway, I also wanted to say, Mayor Steinberg, I was so happy to see you at the Dr. King March, and I think the Sacramento I live in is a lot like the rest of the 20,000 people who were there with us, a lot of them representing organizations. Everybody was happy. I experienced it as a rolling love fest of sorts, and I loved dancing to that drum corps, which is nationally known, I bet, because I think it's the one President Obama invited to Washington for a big parade. But anyway, I liked it that they let even young kids play the drums. I saw at least one, and also yourself.
They let me play. I didn't play well, though. No.
I know, but they, they had the beat. They had the beat. But thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you so much. I just want to acknowledge my colleagues, who now, I think virtually every one of them were at the march as well yesterday, so thank you. It was a great, great celebration.
Yeah, it's really a better city, like I and you observe. It's not what you're hearing here. Thank you.
My next speaker is Mackenzie Wilson.
We hear all, we hear all opinions. That's, that's the point.
Mackenzie Wilson, then Michael Voy, and Pastor Gainsborough.
Well, then first, my opinion kind of differs a little bit because 20,000 people weren't able to attend that march yesterday, but more than, like, more than 20,000 of us actually had to work because we don't get state holidays and things like that, or didn't have fares to get all the way down to Sac City and, or even, you know, live too far. So I really actually just, I don't agree that it's the city you live in. I think you live in a city of privilege. Anyways, my name is Mackenzie Wilson. I'm a Sacramento resident, and I am here today to stand with Black Lives Sacramento, stand with Your Heart's Revolution, stand with the Sacramento Tenants Union, to stand by everybody who comes in here every single week and tells you the truth about your city. But specifically tonight, Black Lives Matter Sacramento, to demand complete oversight of our police department, including its trainings. An association of police officers should not be in charge of the facilitation of trainings ordered as a result of police violence on our community. All of those people who died over those last couple weeks for that funding, you guys have killed just as many. Any actions the city makes that is a result, that uses our tax dollars towards accountability and transparency should be strictly monitored by the community it serves. And as a voting member and a comrade of half the people in this room every week, I, here are my demands, here are our demands. Sacramento Police Commission should be empowered, or should be empowered to approve the process and confirm the completion of each training. Training needs to be conducted onsite with the exception of field trips and facilitated by experts in the field of trainings curriculum. Training should conclude with a test of understanding, and trainings need to be overseen and monitored by community members that have experiences relevant to the training. And I'll go ahead and hand that up to you guys so you can read it instead of having to scream at you every single week.
My next speaker.
Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. Mackenzie brought up one thing on the front end of her testimony that I wanted to ask the city manager for a report back on. During the MLK march, some people got tickets, parking tickets downtown, and the reason that happened is because the city of Sacramento has an adopted list of holidays where we don't enforce parking, and MLK is not one of them. There are six. I would like to ask the city ma, hold on, can I finish?
Please, she's making a helpful suggestion here.
I would like to ask the city manager to add Martin Luther King Day to that list of six so that people don't get tickets, particularly along the parade route in downtown because people, 30,000 people came to walk with us, and they had a hard time parking and got tickets, so.
At least for the parade, right?
Yes, at least for the parade period, but I think that's a good, I think it would be good to add MLK to the list of six and make it seven, if you could bring that back to us. I understand it does take a council action. Thank you. And thank you, Mackenzie.
Good, thank you.
My next, my next speaker is Michael Voy, and the final speaker is Pastor Gainsborough.
Evening, Mayor, council members. Reasonable minds can differ with respect to whether or not it's a good idea to have public restrooms downtown. Well, minds can differ about that. There's expense involved, and there's any number of things, but I still think that there's work to be done. I haven't made my case. So I'm going to, don't know how long it's going to take, but I'm going to try to build my case. People have talked about the public health issue. That apparently doesn't mean anything. So I'm starting from the basis that your constituents really matter. The marijuana constituents got what they wanted. 90% of the constituents that come before the council and want something, get it. They all have money, and I don't want to start class warfare here. The homeless have no money. They can't make campaign contributions or any other thing. They're also, so I want to, people want to talk about, we are a meritorious society. We believe in merit. So nothing happens for the homeless because they don't really, there's no merit. They haven't earned anything. They haven't earned the right to have public restrooms because they haven't made any, haven't made enough money to make campaign contributions. Now, you, you say, you can, you can blow that off, but it's the truth. It is the truth. Now, and if you want to be like that, Mayor, I have never attacked you personally.
I just disagree with what you said, that's all.
Yes, and reasonable minds, reasonable minds can...
Wait, wait.
Reasonable minds can differ.
I'll give you, I'll give you your time. But when you start saying that we aren't doing enough for the homeless because of campaign contribution, that's just plain not right. It's okay. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, the reason why I say that is because those with campaign financing get what they want. If the homeless came in here with $5 million for a community center and donated it to the city, they'd get one. Let's be, let's talk about reality. So I'm out of time, but I will come back because some of the things that you've done, you've done good things, and there are certain things that I'm gonna try to make my case from, from the things that you have supported. Okay?
Thank you.
Us speaker is Pastor Gainsborough. Pastor Gainsborough?
It's good to see you, Mayor and council. I think if Phil Oates, the son of Buzz Oates, came and said, "We need public restrooms," the son, the son of the richest man who has now gone to heaven because he was a follower of Jesus Christ, if Phil Oates stood here and said, "We need public restrooms," there would be restrooms within a month or a week. The 2040 Railroad Avenue is a home run for the council and for you, Mayor Steinberg. It isn't, it isn't the end game, but it is a good start for the 200 human beings that are being fed, restroomed, given a place for their pets, and storage, all of which are vital for the homeless. The Innovative Navigation Center in San Francisco, I don't know if you've been there yet, but they, they established a ratio of, of one worker for every seven clients, and because of that rich, low ratio of one worker to seven clients, they placed people at a historic rate of into housing, into services, and to move them where you want them to move. As a model for the wonderful $600 million of the Whole Person Care Act and for the Prop 63 funds, we only have six weeks left, and the ratio is way too high at the, at the...
Railroad Avenue.
At railroad. And so we need to immediately get another half dozen or dozen workers in there so you have some guaranteed quantified placement, because you want the Whole Person Care Act to be a success. This is a model and for an ongoing triage center. And so I appreciate the work that you're doing, and keep up the good work, but let's get some immediate counselors in there.
It's, the 200-bed triage shelter is not enough.
Understood.
It is not enough.
Yes.
Thank you.
And God bless you.
I have no more speakers for Matters Not on the Agenda.
Thank you. Let's take on, thank you, members of the public. If we can now move to the consent calendar, I know we have, are there any items of the consent calendar that we want any member wants taken off the consent calendar or continue? All right, then we have two witnesses on the consent calendar. Let's take that, and, and then we'll go.
Our first speaker is Mac Elworthy, and then Rev. Mr. Worthy is speaking on items two, five, and 10.
We looking at this, and Dale, you should listen. Now, the water department is in violation on the water meter in my house. How can you charge my back house per cubic foot and charge me for three red rooms? Go through the same meter. Somebody lying. Next door have two houses, they get one bill. Across the street from me get, Dale, listen to what I'm saying. My house is being charged for three red rooms. Water meters is putting into measure per cubic foot. How can that water go through one meter and my daughter be charged for cubic foot and I be charged by rooms? be charged for cubic foot, and I be charged by rooms? Somebody ain't doing what they should do here. Now, when we look at the, the public works on citation, now, we had in here other day that they, the meter maids could give you a citation. What are you doing? You're going to get somebody killed. The thing about it, then, we go to number 10. People vote down you, measure you money. If you can't get it, Elmark, vote it down, because they switch it from the police department back to recreation. And when we black folks see recreation, we see only agents got the top job, job. That's from transportation, mass transportation down. That's bias in hiring. That's not about expertise. That's bias in hiring. You are using something, where's the black folks here? You need people coming in. That's when I oppose these things, and try to get an attorney to come back and appeal these, because I oppose them, that you are in violation.
And the last speaker is Rev. R-E-V.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Reverend Paul Bryan Senior of Prayer and God Street Ministry. I came in to speak as the beginning speakers, because I'm trying to do things out of the ordinary, I guess, and that's really make a difference. I'm starting Homeless for Heaven, and I'm donating into this organization a limousine and a 14-foot box truck to help the homeless start a business. I find that actually, the churches, they put a Band-Aid on things. If you were to cut your arm off, I couldn't help you with just a Band-Aid. And I've seen a lot of little places around town, different organizations, they want to feed the homeless, give them something to wear, and stick them right back in the streets without a job. That's just making them start up the next day and do the same thing I see them personally doing, and that's work. They work harder than most of you guys up in here. Most of them read more than you guys, and most of them are out there on them streets every day, too cold for life itself and making a way. So I figured to jump in between that, and I see what they do. They stand there and hold a sign that man stole from them in order, so they can stand in from a store that's going out of business and pay somebody $10 an hour to hold a sign. That's organized business for homeless. They recycle half of Sacramento's recyclables. That's a business I want to start for the homeless. That's what the truck is for. Figured just have a station spot for them to actually be, instead of trying to make it from point A to point B, I'll have that truck come get their recyclables. Have their limo actually get them started in a business with the limo service, HFH Limo Service, to pick up the low-cost people that really can't afford to get around in a semi-luxury riding, just like you have the Uber now. But I've been doing my limo service for about seven years, and I'm still a lower cost than an Uber. So I'm trying to actually enhance this to provide for the homeless, because there's something that I see making the next step in his life.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for your service to help people. We appreciate it. Okay, we have a motion on the consent calendar by Councilmember Carr, second by Councilmember Hanson. Steve, Councilmember Hanson has a question or a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like staff to look into something related to item number three. Mayor, you've always been very diligent about appointing us to boards and commissions, but sometimes those duties overlap with other duties assigned by the city council. I'd like the city manager and clerk to look into, particularly the Sacramento Transportation Authority. We used to be able to appoint alternates, and we used that process apparently until 2012, but we ceased doing it after that. So that board in particular, look at the ability to appoint alternates, so we have our full contingent. And then also, if there are other boards where we have that opportunity, that would also be helpful to know for the council's edification.
And Vice Mayor Hanson, for clarification, alternates that are not ceded council members, that would be members of the community?
I believe different jurisdictions do it differently, but that may be a policy question we need to entertain. I have the-
But that's your intent.
Yeah, well, yes. Yeah, either way.
Either way, right.
Thank you.
I have the language from the bylaws of the joint powers, so-
Okay.
The other thing that, just while I'm on it, has been helpful for STA in particular, there is a point person on staff that, that helps to advise us. For the other JPAs, Mr. City Manager, it'd be very helpful to assign staff to review the agendas and to provide the council members with feedback on city priorities and city positions, because sometimes we're out there and we have to sort of freelance a little bit, and be better to be coordinated.
Very good.
Could I add something?
Yeah, go ahead.
So one other thing, and we can decide if we want to do this, and it's kind of one more thing, but if you look at the city of Elk Grove, what their folks do who serve on JPAs is they report back to the council. So if, if I'm on RT, those of us on RT know what's going on there, but the rest of the council doesn't, you may want to think of some communication device. I don't know that it's an oral report, but some way to make sure that the entire council knows. And I just want to second Mr. Hanson's. We were in a position last week on an important vote for the city at STA. We only had three out of our five members. Turned out, we got what we needed from it, but it could affect how we-
On the other way.
How we do it, yeah.
Yep, okay. I'm open to any suggestions on these appointments, because I do know that for council members, and I remember when I served on the council, that the workload is heavy, and there is a lot of overlapping responsibilities here. And to the degree that the council thinks, it might be appropriate to think about members of the community, either as members of the boards themselves or as alternates. I'm open to that. Obviously with RT last week, I suggested, and hopefully the council will pass tonight, the idea that we're going to appoint one member from the private sector to the Regional Transit Board, because I think it's a good thing to diversify in every way, but including experience the people who serve on, on those boards and commissions. So I'm open to more reform in this area, you know, based on the council will. Good. Are we good? Okay. We have a motion and a second on the consent calendar. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. The consent calendar passes unanimously. We moved, is there an item that's continued here?
I believe we're going to hear this item, item number 19.
18, is it passed for publication?
Correct.
That was on, oh, I'm sorry, that went to the other page. I'm sorry. We-
Public hearings.
We do have one item, item 19. Go ahead. Who's presenting on item 19? Passed for publication, so I suppose-
No, item number 18 on the consent calendar was passed for publication, and we approved that.
This says passed for publication, passed for publication on 1212. Got it.
We already did that.
Go ahead. Yeah. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you. This is in my district, and I wanted to just ask you to make your presentation very brief, and thank you, and our great staff in the Planning Department, and also Kay Hovnanian and Michelle Smyra and her consulting group, for really working hard on this at the end of last year to bring us, I think, a solution here tonight. So if you could give us sort of the quick presentation. Is there anyone signed up to speak, Madam Clerk?
I have one speaker on this item.
Okay. So if we could, you know, get a presentation and then hear from that speaker.
Thank you, Mayor Steinberg and council members. My name is Ethan Meltzer. I'm an assistant planner with the Community Development Department. I'm the project planner for P-16-003, which is West Shore Lot B. The proposal is for 53 single-unit dwellings on 6.8 acres in single-unit duplex dwelling zone, and to home a central planned unit development. The request requires a general plan amendment, rezoned, PUD schematic plan amendment, PUD guidelines amendment, tentative map with deviations, and site plan and design review with deviations. There were some very minor changes made to the tentative map, since it was reviewed and recommended for approval from the Planning and Design Commission, so I'm just going to briefly read those into the record. You each should have received a handout with three modified conditions from Public Works. I'd also like to add that for B-10 and B-12, it should not be the face of the curb, it should be back of the curb. And then, as well, I'm going to read into the record the changes made to some of the findings of fact. So the changes were to include a non-standard sidewalk, which is being proposed. And this is going to amend Section A, Finding Number Eight, to add that the proposed non-standard sidewalks are shown on the attached site plan. The removal of some sidewalks will not change the overall functionality of the subdivision and not jeopardize the safety of the residents. The site will be a low-density senior community with a gated, within a gated community. Vehicle traffic will primarily be from residents and of the community. The next is Section C, Finding Two, to add in that the reduced setbacks still allow for usable yard space and privacy, and that the site plan with reduced setbacks will not conflict with any PUDs or conditions of approval for the project as proposed. So the applicant is here to make a very brief presentation as well, and staff is here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Good presentation. Is the applicant here?
Mayor, the applicant's here, but I don't know how much of a presentation, do you need to make a presentation, Olga? Okay.
Okay, I'll turn it over to the lead council member here.
I am happy to do that, but I do think there's one public comment.
Of course.
I have one speaker on this item, Mac Elworthy. Mr. Worthy?
Mr. Worthy, is this a good idea?
Dale, this is why I keep coming here. You're talking out of both sides of your mouth. One thing is low-income housing. Ain't nothing on here say anything about affordable housing. You are creating a racial neighborhood. We knew when Ben Benoudi brought in that out there, which was associates of mine through the Italian Real Estates and the Cassie family. But you sit there, and all this go down, but yet still, you allow them to be a doghouse in my neighborhood, and it's acceptable in Oak Park. It's acceptable in Deppus Heights. Here you got a man sitting right across the street, he don't say a word, from Ashley's district. He don't say a word. Go out there, what's out there? Nothing. Once it was a swamp, you couldn't bill in it. All of a sudden, the Corps of Engineers said, "Well, it's all right to bill in it." People's in here the night, about to know us from the airport. You knew. As long as you've been around, any city in this country, you soon going to have houses all the way to the airport. You knew that. They knew that. They knew they took a phone line. But you sit there and say, "Affordable housing, poor folks, where can they go?" You ain't got no scheduled bus transportation out there for back people to get back to the city. Well, it's the homeless lot out there. You got the sleep trains sitting there. But yet still, you say, "Are we going to get you a TR?" You know it ain't going to be no TRs come here that going to be affordable to attract these people, because you got people you don't even know where they're going to be the next day. I talked to people today, "Where were those people outside yesterday?" They don't know. You're supposed to have people that runs. Why couldn't they get the name and picture of those people the last place they was in, a homeless place? And they see them on the street, and the police tell them to move, call the people and take them to a place that they got to pay it. But you don't want that, because this is federal money. Homeless is base for this city to pimp the government for money. The same thing when a baby cry, you try to quit. The baby from crying. That's what you're doing. And you are using these people for money to come in here. Any say it?
Thank you.
I guess the 100,000 people to school districts and second-largest sales tax economy, and I, that all live in that basin, agree to disagree that there's nothing out there. But the issue in front of us today is just about sidewalks, or not sidewalks, in a senior community that is beautiful. And I just want to say thank you to everyone involved, the city department, and the folks who are engaged, and out in the community. The HOA has weighed in as well, as have some of the transit groups. And the issue here, which is really a good one to discuss, because it actually plays into our Vision Zero strategy of keeping cars and pedestrians and bikers separate, is that the focus of this community is a very large, multi-use path for bikes and walking that goes around a lake and connects to many amenities, including a school and several parks. So what we're really trying to do here is make sure that the Department of Utilities and the Department of Transportation have what they need, but also that we protect residents and we give them a beautiful walking path. And we have done that. This is an amazing project. I have no doubt it is going to be well-received in my district. So thank you to all involved. I'd like to make a motion to move this item, and I believe close the public hearing.
Second.
Very good. It's moved and seconded. No further public comment, no other, no other council members wish to speak on the item. Let's say, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and abstain. That measure passes eight to nothing. All right, thank you all very much. Appreciate it. That is the end of a short formal agenda this evening. Are there council ideas and questions? Councilmember Carr.
Yes. Mr. City Manager, I'd like to request that we look at two ordinance changes. The first one concerns front yards. And our current city ordinance allows chain-link fences in the front yards. I'd like a drawback of removing the provision that allows chain-link fences and prohibit chain-link fences from front yards. And I think that goes through law and ledge. And I've spoken to the appropriate staff member about this. I've also spoken to him about the second ordinance. Some time ago, the state changed their bingo rules for bingo halls, allowing prizes up to $500 per game. And the city has not changed its ordinance to align itself with the new state rules. And I understand from your staff that both of these are very minor changes and would take hardly any time at all. But I do suspect it would have to go back through law and ledge. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Getta.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I wanted to thank all the volunteers and organizers who were involved in the march yesterday. Thought it was a great turnout, great to see the community out there, so many family and folks out there. And that brings up to another, the request for the, for our members on RT, and also maybe our city staff here, city manager. This, this January 20th, the Saturday of the Women's March, is going to attract another large number of folks. And last year, I got numerous calls from constituents who wanted to take the RT and the train down, but the trains were already full. And given the fact that we see how many folks will, and families want to participate in this, I'd hope that the message could be sent to RT to see if they can increase their headway, or you know, add more trains on the, on the light rail to come down for the event, so that folks can participate. And since it was on a weekend schedule, the schedules were a little delayed. But if we can get that message across, that would be great. My wife and I and Javi are looking for our first march. We made the attempt to try to do this Saturday, but it didn't quite work out. I guess the new parents started to figure I have to plan a little early. So we'll see how we do this time. And then the, the last request is, again, about six months ago, right after 4th of July, we had asked for a directive to look at the issue of fireworks. And we want, I want to make sure we get an update on that. We're, you know, six months away from this. I know the fire chief is looking at part of the issue. I want to make sure our police department is also following up on this issue. And I know we had requested during Legend Law to look at the issue of federal legislation and working with our federal partners on the tracking of some of the illegal fireworks. With that, thank you very much, and glad to be back.
Good to have you back. Councilman Sheneer.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Two items for the city manager, and then a couple of announcements. First, I had a lot of questions about our current recycling program. We used to go twice a week. We went to once a week for financial purposes and to try to keep the rates stable. Life has changed, particularly with the amount of goods that are now delivered to people's doors, and the amount of cardboard and recycling materials that people have. So I would like to see if we can have solid ways to take a look at that and see what it would cost if we wanted to go back to-
Once a week.
-once a week for that. I mean, I'm hearing a lot of, "I've got this much garbage and overflowing recycling, and I can't fit it all in." So I think it's time to take a look at that. I know we did some actual public polling on that last time around, which was really effective. So maybe if we could do a cost estimate and go back and talk to people and see if they'd be willing to pay what it costs because of Prop 218. So that's one piece. The second piece, we've had some conversations, short conversations as part of items on the convention center and the theater, around trying to replicate some of the success that we had with Golden One Center. And that would be around community workforce training, local hiring- local hiring priority, apprenticeship programs, local and small business involvement. So, I'd like to ask you, City Manager, to take a look at a proposal. We've been working with Fran on this, so she knows about this, but she wanted a formal request. But love to see something come back to the council, I think, within the next 60 to 90 days or in timing that is appropriate for the theater and the convention center so we don't miss that of what an agreement like that would look like, again, building on the success that we've had with Golden One, particularly around the apprenticeship programs. I think that was terrific, and we know those folks are still working all over the community. And when you look at the number of the laborers that we have in the trades, we are way down compared to the need. And beyond coming out of the recession with the fires that have happened in California, we're going to need a lot more people doing this work over time, so if we can do that. And then finally, just two quick announcements. I'm going to be doing office hours this Thursday evening at Maple Elementary School at La Familia at the community center there, 5:30 to 7:00. And then the South Oak Park Community Association has its meeting that night as well, and that will be at 6:30 at the Fruit Ridge Community Center. I will try to be at both.
Thank you, Jay.
At the same time.
Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to just congratulate the District Two community for a very successful MLK march yesterday. We had a very nice turnout. Our distinguished mayor came and graced us with his...
Eloquent.
Looking for the adjective. We had a very successful event, and I think the largest part and the thing I'm probably most proud of is that after the march, well, in fact, during the march, parts of our communities have been at odds. Our police department knows very well that they're two communities that are very closely related but have had issues over the years. But we actually marched and connected both of those communities, and we had a wonderful, I think, expression of brother and sisterhood and no incidences, so that was very pleasing. But also, we had a health fair afterwards at Grant High School, and we had 830 participants at the health fair. And that was, the largest one we had had to date was about 250, and so we had a big turnout. So, I want to thank our community and the host, folks that put that together, including my wife, brother to brother, sister to sister, and some others that were involved in it. And so, thanks to all of them and to my colleagues here and our mayor. Thank you.
Great. It's really a terrific event. Congratulations. Great community. Councilmember Ashby.
Mayor, I assume you're going to invite everybody to your big event.
I have, I was, David, you know...
Okay, best for last.
Second, best for last.
Okay, good. Then, I just wanted to invite folks who are considering coming to the Women's March to join us. I'm not sure all of you were there last time. I'm sure all or most of you or everybody in town will be there this week as well. And if people need more information, sometimes these marches can be a little hard to wrap your hands around exactly where are we supposed to be and what are we doing? And if anybody needs help with that, they can reach out to my office, who has been in contact with the organizers. And of course, it's this Saturday, and we'll, it'll start in South Side Park and then it'll end over there at the Capitol. And one of the coolest things about this is that they have secured one of the Time Magazine silence breakers. You probably know her, Mayor Adama.
I sure do.
Who is a lobbyist for Visa and is part of the group of ladies that took up the campaign for "We've Said Enough." So, it'll be exciting to hear her speak, proud to be a part of it, obviously going to bring out my, some of my youth committee and a lot of people from my district, and anybody who wants to walk with me is welcome.
It was a fabulous event last year, and I know it will be equally fabulous this year. I look forward to being there and joining you. Let me make, oh, we got Councilwoman Warren had one more and Councilmember Harris. Go ahead.
You know, my colleagues know I had a little challenge, but I just wanted to make everybody know, aware that I'm growing my hair out, you know? So, I'm letting my hair grow. And the goal was to outdo Matt and Jay Chenier, and so I just want you to know, I'm winning right now, you guys.
Bar is low.
You picked an easy struggle.
Whatever. Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. One announcement, the River Park Neighborhood Association meeting is this Thursday, 1:18 at 7:30 at Fremont Presbyterian Church, 5770 Carlson Drive, Room E210. Should be an interesting discussion, and I'll be present there to answer questions. And lastly, Mayor, I'm sad to say that one of our own passed away recently, Kathy Taylor. Kathy Taylor was a resident in East Sacramento in the not-too-distant past. She had subsequently moved to Cape Cod and then down to Texas, a woman substantially younger than myself who died suddenly from cancer. And it's a big loss. She worked for State Parks. She worked at our Railroad Museum for a number of years. She was very active in the community, and she was a great help in Rebuild McKinley. She worked with our former manager's wife, Marilyn, doing an awful lot of painting on Rebuild McKinley. She forged many relationships during that project, and she will be sorely missed by the communities of East Sacramento and River Park. And we wish James and Carl Bradley, who survived her, we wish them all the best. It's a sore loss for a lot of us, so if we could just adjourn a minute.
Thanks, Jeff. We sure will, and I appreciate you raising that. I was shocked to hear it. I knew Kathy very well during my first tenure on the city council and her involvement with the Railroad Museum and the rail yards, and she was a great public servant. So, I have one announcement myself before I turn it over to Ms. Capi, and that is that Thursday morning, I have the privilege of delivering the mayor's annual State of the City address. I think it begins, the program begins about between 8:00 and 8:30 at the Memorial Auditorium, and I know, I think, most of my colleagues will be joining me as we reflect on the good work we have done together, but maybe more importantly, what our challenges and our opportunities are moving forward. And I look forward to talking about what I see as possible for our city and how we get there. So, I look forward to seeing all of you. Thank you. And members of the public. Yes?
Is there a ticket for that or is it open to the public?
I'll make sure you get in, okay? There's no tickets. It's open to the public and it's free. It may be, I just don't know exactly what the capacity is. I know there are a lot of people signing, but Mike, we'll talk, okay?
Would you have me?
Yes. Okay. In fact, would you like to give the speech? Okay. Hey, thank you all. Mindy's got a couple of boards and commissions, and then we'll adjourn.
Thank you. I have a few brief board and commission appointments. The first is Paratrans and Inc., Board of Directors, Anna Fontis; Preservation Commission, Ryan Miller; Sacramento Heritage Incorporated Board of Directors is Kay Worthington; The Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission, Kathy Cresswell; Samuel Starks and Tiffany Wedding; and to the Utilities Rate Advisory Committee, Alessio Al Garcia. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Nothing further to come before our city council. We are adjourned. Yes. I don't, but I assume we'll all do what we did last time, right?